Good evening. My name is Erwin Schmierinski. I'm thrilled to be the dean of Berkeley Law School. On Wednesday, May 17th of 2017, then interim provost Carol Christ announced that I was going to be the 13th dean of Berkeley Law School. The next day, Thursday, May 18th, purely by coincidence, there was an article published in the San Francisco Chronicle. It was an op-ed by Charles Reichman titled "The Case for Renaming Bolt Hall." In his op-ed, he pointed out the racist views and vile statements of John Bolt. He raised the provocative question, "Under what circumstances should an institution remove a historical name from a building or their campus space?" He included by saying, "The UC Berkeley School of Law is overdue for reexamination of this kind for the guard with its historic name, Bolt Hall." I must tell you, of all of the issues that I would want to arise in the week that I was named dean, the name for the law school would not have been among them. And yet, that issue is before us, is it's for colleges and universities all over the country. I decided that the appropriate thing to do would be to create a committee to look at the issue and to make a recommendation to me, to the campus, to our faculty, staff, and students. And I decided it needed to be a committee that would represent and reflect the views of the many constituencies that make up the law school. And I'm delighted that the five members of the committee are here. I'll introduce them to you, and I'm going to just go in the order that they're here. I'm going to not do long introductions. Letty Volb from our faculty, Gar Russell from our staff, Charles Cannon, who's our CAO and from the senior administrators, Cheyenne Overall is the designee of the students, and Quinta, who's going to be moderating, was chosen by the Bolt Hall Alumni Association. So we were able to have a faculty member, a staff member, a senior administrator, a student, and alumni to bring together the views. They then engaged in a study process and learned a great deal. I'll just quickly tell you some of the things that they learned. For me, it was very educational. And then I'm going to turn it over to Quinta and the panel. I'm really here, like you, to listen and to learn from them. I learned, for example, that John and Elizabeth Bolt married after the Civil War. They first moved to Austin, Nevada. John Bolt lacked a formal legal education. He began to read the law. He was admitted to the Nevada bar in 1867, and he then served as a judge from 1870 to 1871. It's interesting that then, serving as a judge, was something much early in a person's legal career. In 1871, the couple resettled in Oakland, California, and John practiced law in San Francisco. The couple had a young daughter, and they befended many people around the University of California Berkeley faculty. John Bolt never ran for elected office, but he was very involved in the elections and political activities of others at the time. In 1877, at the Berkeley Club, John Bolt read a paper titled "The Chinese Question." By any measure, it was deeply racist, it was offensive, it was vile in what he said. One of the quotes from it is, "Two non-assimilating races never yet have lived together harmoniously on the same sile unless one of those races in a state of servitude to the other," he said with regard to the Joes of Chinese ancestry. Quote, "We cannot and will not assimilate with them." Quote, "They have not the remotest inclination to assimilate with us." Quote, "If we cannot then live harmoniously together, the Chinese, the inclusion is sound that Chinese immigration should be prevented." Indeed, in 1879, there was a vote that was against further Chinese immigration into California. And you'll hear much more about the views of John Bolt as we go forward tonight. Turns out that this law school never was officially named Bolt Hall. Now, those who went here have colloquially long referred to it as Bolt, but it was never the official name of the law school. The official name of the law school has never been other than the University of California Berkeley School of Law. We call it Berkeley Law. Buildings here have names. Two of the four buildings that make up this complex are named. Simon Hall is named, and there is the building that is called Bolt Hall. More about that in a moment. There are two still, there's two buildings that still are unnamed, North Edition and the newer part of the law school, so-called South Edition. And if any of you are so inclined for an appropriate sum of money, we'd be delighted to put your name on those buildings. And I'm not kidding about that at all. Elizabeth Bolt gave $100,000 to the University of California to construct a building for the Department of Jurisprudence. I was told that she made the promise before the 1906 earthquake and never fully paid off on that promise. The building was named Bolt Hall Memorial School of Law. It was in honor of John Bolt, her husband, who died in 1901. Elizabeth Bolt provided in her will for naming two endowed chairs. Elizabeth Bolt died on February 10th of 1917. The original Bolt Hall remains on campus. It's now called Durant Hall. In 1951, the law building was completed. This is the oldest part of our building complex. The classroom wing in the center part of the building, going to the end of the main reading room, the section we're now in, which is booth, was completed in 1968. But where my office is, is officially called Bolt Hall 215. The name is on the building in two places as Bolt Hall, though it never actually is formally named Bolt Hall. The name has survived ever since. As best I can tell, we do not have the authority to change the name of the building, assuming it is known as Bolt Hall. We could make a recommendation to the campus in terms of that. There are likely legal issues if we do anything to change the name of the professorships, because that was designated in the will. But many other things use the name Bolt. There's the Bolt Hall Alumni Association. There's the Bolt Hall Student Association. There are Bolt Hall, there are John and Elizabeth Bolt lectures. And so, we, of course, can make a recommendation to the campus to try to eliminate any use of the name Bolt. We on our own can take off the name Bolt for those things that we, the law school, have given to Bolt. The underlying question here is, what should we do with regard to the name Bolt? That really frames this. And so, I asked the committee how to proceed, and they said it important that we have a public forum, a town hall on the issue. And I've asked Quinta, a member of this committee, to serve as the moderator for tonight's program. I'm going to do a short bio. She, like the others here, have incredibly impressive credentials. She recently became a partner of the law firm of Boy Schuler Flexner. Before that, she was a partner at the law firm of Kekker Van Nest and Peters. She served as lead counsel in many class action matters in state and federal courts of the country on behalf of many industries. When you look at lists of top lawyers in California and across the country, she's always on those lists. The Recorder named her a lawyer on the fast track. She was named Women Leader in Tech Law by The Recorder. She was named Best Lawyers Under 40 by the National Asian Pacific American Bar Association, and it goes on and on with the honors and recognition that she's so deservedly received. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Quinta and to the members of the panel. And as I said, my role here tonight, like yours, is to listen and to learn.
Thank you, Dean Schmierinski, for that very generous introduction. So I am very happy and proud to be here as your moderator. I was joking with Alex Lee. They chose purposely a litigator, because we can control audiences. But in all seriousness, I, you know, I'm here to establish the ground rules, to learn, to listen, and to introduce the videos and advocates. As you know, there were many, many, many comments that the committee received. And by no means are the views that you hear today exclusive of the various comments, but it is to spur the discussion. So what will happen tonight, let me lay out for you, is first, the Appalsa students have put together a video presentation that you will be watching. Then we will be hearing from the first speaker today, Alex Krem, class of 1972. The second advocate would be Alex Lee, class of '04, and then Don Tamaki, class of '76. Before we get there, I wanted to thank a few individuals. John Quo, who's here today, General Counsel of Bavarian, also Chair of the Board of the Berkeley Law Bolt Hall Alumni Association. He's taken a great leadership role in this issue, along with the dean and the committee and the members of this community. I wanted to establish first, so we're going to hear all the speakers speak, and I will introduce them briefly right now before they do so. And then, what will happen is that I will moderate community comments. And if you see here, there are two microphones. And so, what we're trying to do is, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand. I will call you, and then you can speak to the microphone that is closest to you. I know we're all lawyers. We like to hear each other talk. You guys know what I'm talking about. We're going to try to limit speakers to about two minutes. Obviously, I'll try not to interrupt you, but I want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to speak, because we're trying to close up this town hall by 8:00 PM. Please permit each speaker the courtesy of concluding his or her remarks. And obviously, this is a respectful audience. I mean, I was a member of Berkeley Law as well, and I know that we all care about each other's opinions. But I will stop comments that are irrelevant, derogatory, not in good taste, unduly prolonged, substantially repetitious of statements that have otherwise been made. And with that, let me introduce to you the first speaker, and then I'll, after that, I'll introduce Alex Lee and Don Tamaki. So Alex Krem, thank you, Alex, for--
You can do the video first.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're right. Thank you. My apologies. Okay, let's start with the video, and then I'll do the speakers. So the first video is by the Appalsa law students, and I've been so impressed with them, led by a number of leaders in Appalsa on this issue. And rather than summarize what they would like to present to this community, we'll just go ahead and play this video. Thank you.
My name is Ryan Sun. I'm a 1L here at Berkeley Law.
Hello, so I'm a 2L at Berkeley Law. My name is Pauling Ta.
My name is Debbie O, and I'm a 1L.
Hi, my name is Conkret Chung, and I'm a 1L here at Berkeley Law.
Hi, I'm Jeffrey Lin. I'm a 2L at Berkeley Law.
I'm Chris Gao. I'm a 1L.
Hello, I'm Florence, and I'm a 1L.
I'm Julia Lepes, and I'm a 1L.
Hi, I'm Clara Choi, and I'm a 1L.
Deborah Choi, 1L.
Mayra Karim, today, 1L.
Sure, I'm Christopher Brown. I'm a 2L here at Berkeley Law.
Thus the Chinaman has brought to us and planted within our border all the vicious practices and evil tendencies of his home, aggravated somewhat perhaps by the circumstances that he has lost what little restraint his home government imposed upon him, without submitting to the restraints of ours.
Civilized race will not assimilate with the barbarian race, but it may civilize the barbarian first and assimilate with him afterwards.
The people of the Pacific Coast have been so far the only people exposed to Chinese immigration. They are strongly and barely opposed to it.
But as far as we can judge, the ideal standard of the Chinaman is constructed on an entirely different plan. His notions of right and wrong are in many respects totally unlike ours.
A population so dense as to be overcrowded, our Mongolian immigrants bring us all the evils of overcrowding. The Chinaman in America cannot comprehend that there is plenty of space.
The Chinaman differs from us in color and features and in size. His contact excites us, or at least most of us, an unconquerable repulsion, which it seems to me must ever prevent any intimate association or miscegenation of the races.
The two races are also separated by a remarkable divergence in intellectual character and disposition. Our habits of thought are so entirely different that it seems impossible that they should ever become reconciled.
It's just something impossible to hear out loud today, in today's world, but I'm not sure how people are still thinking inside themselves.
When I found out that he had made these types of statements, it was actually a little jarring for me at first, and it took me a long time to realize that, I guess, like, students had to do something about this, because it wasn't something that was necessarily acceptable to me at all.
Our current climate echoes a lot of these sentiments, and I think that we can all agree that this is not something that's conducive for, like, our culture today and what really is in place right now, with the fact that we have so many different people living in America. And it's up to us as the current generation to upend these types of, like, wrongs that are rooted in tradition and lead by example.
Come to this place with a lot of really big expectations, because Berkeley Law is known as such a good school, great law school, you know? If you come here, you'll get a great law career afterwards. So to come here and then, not immediately, but very close to immediately, find out that the name of the person that this building is named after, that is so closely tied with this law school, was kind of like a pretty big shock to me.
When I first heard about it this year, it was really disheartening to hear that, you know, people that look like me and people that I consider a part of my community were not welcome and were not considered to be equals by the person that this school is named after and that this school puts on a pedestal.
And now that we live in a more open society, we have to consider the points of everyone and not just the people who are in power at the time.
And I think it really reflects that he used the word "unconquerable repulsion" to describe how he viewed just the general public's opinion of everyone who is Chinese.
I'm a person that is multi-ethnic and biracial, and I grew up with two different races in my household and three different languages. In essence, it highlights how I just don't belong, and our school is named after someone who believes that I shouldn't exist in this world.
And just to think that there might be this notion out there that we're coming to school as intended by Bolt is troubling, because what Bolt did with his education, right? He made all these seemingly smart arguments on how Chinese people is somewhat an inferior race, on totally baseless arguments, but he was, because of his education, he was able to make them convincing, persuasive, and that's partly how Chinese Exclusion Act was passed back in those days. And just to think that there's this notion that we are also coming to school as law students, you know, get this education, and to what end? To the same end that, in the same way that John Bolt used his education to this kind of, to further this kind of political agenda? I don't think so. I didn't come to law school to, for any of this kind of agenda. So just to have this notion out there that possibly we came to law school as intended by Bolt is actually troubling to me.
Thank you, Appalsa law students, for that, for taking the time to put that together. That was very moving. So the first speaker here, Alex Krem, class of, actually, 1971, not '72, right? '71. Alex has almost 50 years legal, banking, investment, financial experience in 70 countries. Just for background, so you know, he worked as a lawyer with the U.S. Department of Commerce in Washington and the international law firm of Graham &amp; James. Alex spent 17 years with B.O.A. in San Francisco, Tokyo, London, and Cairo, where he developed and managed multimillion-dollar loan portfolios. He was general manager of New Zealand Insurance's Commercial Bank and ran its investment banking group, where he managed over 1.2 billion in funds. Alex has lectured worldwide, consulted with the World Bank and other organizations, and he's also an active philanthropist. He's been involved with organizations such as Camping Unlimited for the developmentally disabled since 1957 and is now the chairman. His credentials are very impressive. He's, he also was a member of class of '71, as noted, and at the time was part of the JD MBA program. He says that his claims to fame in law school were modest, but he distinguished himself by being described by Professor Stefan Risenfeld as his lazy assistant, as distinct from the usual stupid assistant honor typically awarded his longstanding suffering research assistants. In any case, his, his experience here has been transformative, and his respect for the school, its faculty, and his administration, his classmates is enormous. Thank you for agreeing to speak to us today, Alex.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. You know, Mark Twain once joked about being tarred and feathered and ridden out of town on a rail. He said, "If it wasn't for the honor, I'd just as soon walk." So that's how I feel now. I'm comforted to see a few other gray-haired white guys in the audience, so at least I'm speaking to you particularly. An email arrived asking me my opinion on the name Bolt. It prompted me to think carefully about what I did think about the name. Frankly, I hadn't thought much about it. I didn't know Bolt had a first name, or a middle name, or a wife named Elizabeth. It was just a school I went to. And when I did think about it, I realized that this was something important, that names have power, that honor has meaning, and that we leave a legacy for the future. I also sought the advice of my middle daughter, who's now a third-year law student and who shared with me her urgent views on the matter. So I was frankly surprised when Dean Cannon asked me to speak, until he explained my multigenerational reply had resonated with him and the committee. So I blame my radical and relentless daughters for my current predicament here, tarred and feathered. I wanted them to be independent, honest, fair-minded, and unafraid. Now I pay the price for my success. I thank them and the many young people, people of color, women, Muslims, members of the LBGTQ, I'm not one of them, so I have trouble, community, those with disabilities, and others systematically marginalized by our current and much-maligned patriarchy, for the common voice they all seem to be forming on the state of our union. Perhaps we might learn from them. I consider myself an Eisenhower Republican and an Edmund Burke Conservative. I don't like change, especially when things are okay, as they are. But actually, things aren't okay as they are. Many think our system is broken. It isn't broken. It works just right. The people in power stay in power. The people marginalized stay marginalized. It isn't broken, but it is not okay. We can talk about the electoral process, Citizens United, health care as a human right or an insurance underwriting, tort law, our penal system, mass incarceration, the military-industrial complex, Big Pharma, opioids, big corn and ethanol, big oil, fracking, and leaded gasoline, Monsanto, GMO, and Roundup. I don't need to go on. Things are not okay. Pop Guro Eckhart Tolle observed that if we were a person, we would be judged as clinically insane. Sad but true. When I was in law school, we could blame the older generation for the mess. Now I'm a member of the older generation, and I'm sad to say, we leave the world for our children and grandchildren, much sadder than when we got it. So now, I'd like to articulate four distinct reasons for recommending that this name, Bolt, be erased, not only from the door, but from everything but the history books and perhaps some dark memos. You don't have to agree with all of these four reasons, but I think that if you can agree with any one of them, any one of them, then you'll have to agree with me that, that we should just erase the name. Reason number one, marketing. Like the princess who once wrought at Bayeux, only a few local cogniscentes recognize the name Bolt. Travel to Europe, Asia, the Middle East, even, God forbid, New York, and few lawyers have ever heard of Bolt Hall, and fewer mere mortals have. Yet virtually everyone in the civilized world has heard the name Berkeley and most admire it, from Tokyo to Timbuktu, from Shanghai to Svalbard. We are blessed with a sure-winning name. Few cities in the world are imbued with such academic prestige. In terms of raw marketing power, Berkeley ranks with Oxford and Cambridge, well above Heidelberg and Göttingen. Why would a good marketer abandon natural celebrity, respect, and intellectual power that comes with such a name for a name that sounds vaguely like a machine shop or a place to store hardware? The name Berkeley rocks. The name Bolt carries zero cachet, zero power, or zero cognitive value. Reason number two, symbolism. We define ourselves by the decisions we make and the basis on which we make them. If we do not stand up against racism, how can we expect it to end? And I'd like to put a footnote down here. It is certainly true that John Henry Bolt was focusing on people from China. I don't think that should be the agenda. I think we are talking about racism, sexism, genderism, ageism, all of these bitter little prejudices that the patriarchy uses. If we eliminate the name Bolt, we send a strong, clear, and righteous signal to the world. We have considered the matter, the man, his life and his life work, and reject what he stood for and what he worked for. We reject absolutely and categorically the name of a man who worked so hard for principles anathema to our view of the country we live in, the country we build, and the country we leave to our future. As to his wife, more later. By contrast, if we keep the name, contextualized or not, we place him and his name above many others who have given their lives for justice and for the principles that we admire. Without much thinking, we can all name lawyers whose influence and reputation are beyond reproach and certainly signal a better future than this last two-century ago racist. Reason number three, fairness and kindness. Racism pervades our society. Sadly, many of us here have learned to rely on it and benefit from it. The system is inherently racist. It's our system. This is a system that perpetuates and institutionalizes racism and protects the same rigid social system that marks country clubs, yacht clubs, and fraternal organizations. Racism is a condition created and maintained by the well-meaning, sincere, usually white folks like me. As members of the entitled minority, we are remarkably insensitive to the debilitating daily barrage of micro insults that confront people of color and women of any race, for that matter. I think it is a weak and timid explanation we make when we ignore the pain that racism or sexism carries and causes others because we defend the status quo, or split hairs of whether it was a racist or his wife, whom we would honor. The law, number three. We are, or should be, just and wise officers of the court, pledged to uphold the law of the land. If we agree that all are created equal before the law and that our laws are designed to ensure that equality, then we must reject any act or admission that contravenes that absolute commitment to our just laws, or signal that some people, some of the time, under some circumstances or contexts, are somehow exempt from them. Put simply, how do we treat the memory of a lawyer who either did not read the Declaration or the Fourteenth Amendment, or chose to ignore them, or assumed simply that they applied to white males? Those were my four points. Now, permit me, if I may, to comment on positions I have read. I was given the chance to reread many emails relating to this inquiry. Some were thoughtful, some brief, some frankly abusive, and some very funny. Here I try to summarize those views and comment on them. Defense number one, resurrecting a dead or sensitive issue isn't nice. Why bring this up? Enough already. Well, I think that old wounds heal best when treated intelligently with compassion and consideration, not swept under the carpet and ignored. Revisionism, don't change history. Many people object to disintering the buried because it's rude or unsettling. Thomas Jefferson had slaves, permitted the whipping of little children. Ignore his professional obligations of an attorney to use a client's money to buy freedom for slaves. Leland Stanford led hunting expeditions to kill American Indians. Do we have the right, and probably the duty, to rethink their actions and to revise our opinions? I certainly think we do. Amnesia, we shouldn't delete these dark chapters from our history. Perhaps. Perhaps history books and windowless museums are the best place for the names like John Bolt-- Bolt, George Custer, Robert E. Lee, but certainly not law schools. We distinguish between honor and the memory of past indiscretions and crimes. Defense number four: context. Somehow, we want to excuse people who violated the eternal lessons of humanity's great teachers because things were different then. I don't buy this. Who would name a university after Adolf Hitler or Joseph Stalin, or a law school after Paul Parth or Augusto Pinochet? These, I think, are people best obliterated from our history, and certainly from the hallowed halls of a law school. If moral lessons demand remembering, then museums and history books are the place for people like John Bolt. Number five: slippery slope. Oh, hold on. First John Bolt, then Barrows, then Phelan, then Robert E. Lee. What next? Jefferson, Washington, Bishop Berkeley himself? When will this nonsense stop? Good question, and worthy of thoughtful answers. I, for one, vote for a country that honors people who do the right thing regardless of their power and influence, not for oversized legends who violated the very core of fairness, justice, and humanism. I'm frankly excited by the prospect of reevaluating who made America great and who turned a blind eye to justice for reasons of expediency or personal gain. Idea number six: balance sheet. Let's weigh the good and the bad. John Henry Bolt was self-educated and hard-working. He made himself a lawyer without going to law school. He was honored in his small mining town by being elected judge, a title he carried to California and used constantly. He was even president of the Bohemian Club. Not bad. Is this enough to counter the fact that he was a leader of state in national efforts to exclude Asians and to publish things that should make any of us blush? I have a natural affection to iconic figures and willing to forgive our founding fathers from Virginia, Washington, Jefferson, Madison, Mason, Henry, and others, despite their exploitive plantation system. Yet many of us are willing to throw the next generation of heroes under the bus because the injustice of preserving slavery was heavier than that of protecting states' rights against naked federal power. It's pretty complicated. And nobody is clean. William Penn Warren famously wrote, "Man is conceived in sin and born in corruption, and he passes from the stink of the deity to the stench of the shroud." Nobody is clean, except us here tonight. This is about balance sheet. How many slave-child whippings should be erased from the record because Thomas Jefferson copied John Locke's words for the Declaration of Independence? How much credit do we give George Custer's ambition and fearlessness when balanced against his intentions at Little Big Horn? George Washington was a slave owner, as well as father of our country. Some balance is necessary. Maybe Washington, Alexander the Great, and Pericles deserve to be honored. However, it's quite difficult for me to put John Henry Bolt in that pantheon. He was an untutored, small-town guy whose neighbors elected him judge. He made his name at the expense of other, more recent, quite alien, and very vulnerable immigrants. There's no honor in any of this. How about protecting the little woman? My daughters love this argument. Well, it wasn't John, it was his wife that actually gave the money. Whose money was it? Whose name is it honoring? And now, speaking as a hard-hearted banker, that $100,000 at today's value is about 2.5 million. Levi paid 220 million for 20 years on the Levi Stadium in San Jose. On that basis, Elizabeth earned three months' right to the name Bolt. I'm not real happy about that. Okay, habit. Here's a tough one for people like me. When I wrote tonight's meeting in my diary, I confess, I wrote Bolt. To me, this is Bolt Hall. It has been for 50 years. My diploma is from Bolt Hall. My football team was Bolt Gold. Most of my law school friends played for Bolt Gold or Bolt Blue. Change is wrenching, and arbitrary, and irritating. However, unless the full significance of this discussion is weighed, we don't realize that we can change and we must change. Otherwise, the inspiration we leave to our forward is spoiled. Last thing, who cares? Come on. Life goes on. Forget it. Who cares? I do. My daughters do. And I think, with respect, that all of you should too. Okay, here's the good news, my conclusion. What is the object of this meeting and the outcome we hope to achieve? Each of you will have your own answer to these questions. All will be intelligent and fair-minded, because I know you're all intelligent and I presume you're all fair-minded. Well, here's mine. I hope for a world where children of all races and creeds do not grow up to discover that a respected figure, an honored name, be it Robert E. Lee or John Henry Bolt, Leland Stanford or Thomas Jefferson, worked against equity and fairness. Bolt, avowed racist, and the woman who took his name and his money are no different. Personally, I admire Robert E. Lee, but embrace an America where little children of color do not see him honored in public to discover later the role he paid in their emancipation. So too, even more, for John Bolt, who is certainly not a Robert E. Lee, a George Washington, or a Thomas Jefferson. When Bob Dylan warned us that the times were changing, he was simply echoing Heracitus: "Change is constant. We adjust, or we become extinct." Which side of history do you choose? The dark past with context as an excuse, or a bright future where we honor the names of those whose lives and work supported our best values? You know my answer, and I know that you will find the best answer for the future you want. Thanks.
Thank you, Alex Krem, class of 1971. Our next speaker is Alexander Lee. Many of you recognize Alex Lee graduating from 2004, and he graduated with the Soros Justice Fellowship from Open Society Foundation, founded the transgender civil rights organization TGI Justice Project. After serving as its founding ED for five years, Alex returned to Berkeley Law as a public interest career counselor with the school's career development office. There, he counseled and mentored hundreds of students, which I know about personally, entering public interest and public service careers. Alex also served on the staff-faculty climate committee formed by Dean Murray and helped lead efforts to provide professional development opportunities for Berkeley Law staff. Alex left the CDO last fall to join funders for LGBTQ issues as the program director for their new Grantmakers United for Trans Community Initiative. There, Alex leads projects to increase national foundation funding for transgender communities and issues. Alex is also an independent filmmaker and co-owner of the production company Light Show Pictures. Please welcome Alex Lee.
So that was quite a speech. I don't want to even hold a candle to that. So I did not — I'm the kind of person that doesn't write out entirely what I'm going to say, because I actually am terrible at reading the whole thing, and I won't end up looking at anybody if I do that. So my comments are going to be more off the cuff and a little bit disorganized, so I want to apologize in advance for that. So as the bio mentioned, I have a pretty long history with Berkeley Law, starting as a student, but then also coming back here as a member of the career development office, which I was a part of for eight years. So I was here for quite a while and saw the school change quite a bit. You know, went through several deans, several expansions of the size of student body, and many reactions to tragedies, national and local. And just watching the school grow and change was something that really, I think, stuck with me, and it definitely informs my comments that I have tonight. I also want to say that, in true lawyer fashion, I'm going to be advancing some arguments that I don't 100% believe in myself, because I think it is important to have as many options and ideas on the table so that they can make informed decision about what to do moving forward. So I'm going to do my best to put on those different hats. I have three points to make, not four, but three. And it's important to me — so all of these fit underneath the rubric of, I think, the arguments for keeping the name of Bolt Hall but with context, and that context meaning having to be presented every single time that the Bolt Hall name appears. So it's a pretty high bar, I think. Let me go through the arguments. So first, keeping the name around does keep the fight against discrimination alive. I think it keeps that conflict and that the pain current. You know, if you erase something, you always risk forgetting. It's like you're saying that these thoughts and these ideas don't exist anymore, or that we're done with them, when those are obviously not true. Like, look where we are right now as a country. People actually do believe what John Bolt said in his writings. They won't say it like that, and they won't say it to your face, but people do believe those things. I do hope that a university and a law school is a place where our students can learn how to actively counter those arguments and those ideas, not just pretend they don't exist, ignore them, throw them out of the building, but actually engage with them, pick them apart, show the world how wrong they are, and just learn the skill of being an advocate in that way. And having the name here is a constant reminder. It's like having a rock in your shoe. Something's wrong. Our society, something's wrong in our society, there's something rotten here. Racism is still a thing at Berkeley Law, at Berkeley, as any part of the legal profession. And it's incumbent upon us, and the reason why I'm so have such a heart for Berkeley Law, is that we do pay attention to that, and we ought to pay attention to that continuously. So having the name around basically prompts us to keep doing that. If we meet that challenge, that's the proviso I was saying earlier about having context. So if we have John Bolt's name anywhere, or Bolt in general, because it often is conflated with John Bolt, as opposed to Elizabeth Bolt, that their school should be transparent about its own journey dealing with racism and discrimination, both within the law school as well as within the legal profession. So that means, on the website, we should actually have content of who John Bolt was and what things he said, and the things that he believed in, and why we think those things are wrong, and how the school has changed, and all the different things we're doing, both stuff that has been successful and things that haven't been, but at least we've tried to deal with racism and discrimination in the legal profession and in the school. So I'm not just talking about missions, I'm talking about staff issues, I'm talking about tenure, like, I'm talking about the whole piece of legal profession in which we occupy. A great analogy for this particular argument is if you look at Worcester Hall. How many people remember, know of Worcester, which is just down a little bit? So Worcester is the environmental design or the architecture school. It was deliberately created to be unfinished. So if you've ever been inside of it, the ceilings are missing, you can actually see the pipes and the wires. And this is all on purpose from the architects of the building, because they wanted it to be a piece of discussion and challenge for students who are walking in through those halls. And I feel similarly around keeping the Bolt name here, is it should be a piece of discussion, it should be a challenge for our students. And this is a comment actually inspired by Mr. Krem. I believe that's obviously very, very important to stand up to racism, but I don't think that's enough. Like, I don't think saying, you know, we reject, just simply that we reject what John Bolt said and what he stood for is enough. I think you really have to pick those ideas apart. And I think that keeping this central to the identity of the school and being really open and frank about it is one way to do it. Now, a little bit more about Elizabeth Bolt, so my second point. I want to bring up the option of renaming Bolt to mean Elizabeth Bolt explicitly. She did more than just give money to the school, and I am a little sad that there isn't more information known about her that's more widely known. She actually stayed associated with Berkeley Law for the rest of her life, essentially. So decades. She was essentially a patron of the school. She participated in activities. She came to hear speakers. She supported the school personally. So she was very, very active, and she treated the school as if it was her second family. She had a pretty tragic family life, in fact. I believe her daughter, one of her children died, is that right? And then the surviving grandchild was taken away by the in-laws, and they just didn't let her see it. So basically, she had nobody. Her family was gone. So she treated Berkeley Law as her family, and she became so close to the school and the people in it that I think some professors actually served as pallbearers at her funeral. So she, I think, earned a little more in three months for her name to be on the school. And I do think, and I don't think it's a bad thing to be somebody who identifies as a male calling out sexism when I see it, that I think it's wrong to take away her legacy because of something stupid her husband did. And I think that's happened so many times over history, and I don't know why we'd do it again. It doesn't make any sense to me. So I want to keep it as an option to explicitly call it Elizabeth Bolt Hall instead of just leaving it assumption that it's John Bolt Hall we're talking to, we're talking about. And the last reason why I think we should leave it, this is more of a tongue-in-cheek reason, I think it would piss off John Bolt to have his name on the school, because we have a high number of Chinese students, not only Chinese-American, but from China, who are here. And I think that he's probably flipping around his grave that his name is still attached to this school, because it's the opposite of what he believed, and I think that it would be — I find it very personally satisfying to know that that's likely true. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Alex Lee, class of '04. Our last speaker before we get to community comments is Don Tamaki, class of 1976. For over 40 years, Don has specialized in providing legal counsel to entrepreneurs, privately-held companies, and nonprofit corporations. He focuses on commercial leasing, personnel and employment law, corporate governance, and other practices such as licensing, acquisition, and other business transactions. Don has extensive experience negotiating talent agreements, representing Olympic ice-skating gold medalists such as Chrissy Yamaguchi, television anchors, and many other famous people. In sort of keeping with the tradition of community service, and many of you might know that Don Tamaki was also a founder of the Asian Law Caucus, Don served on the pro bono team that reopened the landmark Supreme Court case Korematsu v. United States overturning Fred Korematsu's conviction for refusing, as an American citizen, to be incarcerated on account of his racial ancestry. Don is a past member of the Board of Glide Foundation, and he's the board president of the San Francisco Japantown Foundation. And with that, I introduce you to Don Tamaki.
Thanks, Quinn, and it's an honor, really, for me to be here. I have to admit, I have to confess, that I'm a bit ambivalent about this issue, and it's not because I'm not passionate about it. I find myself agreeing to many things that Alex you said. We are in the context of attacks on democratic institutions that we've not ever seen, and it's not as if we should not confront racism wherever it exists and wherever we see it. But there's so many issues going on, I think it causes some level of ambivalence in me. But again, it's not because I don't care about this issue. If the law school changes its name, I'm actually okay with that, but I think my preference would be if we use a name, if we keep the name, that the law school commit to promoting public awareness of the role of John Bolt played in this ultra-racist period of California history. For the rest of us, this is really a teachable moment, in my view. And if the public awareness campaign is done properly, every time the name Bolt is mentioned, the name will also be a reminder of this dark chapter in California history that ought never to be repeated. As you probably all know, while it is shocking to know that Bolt's statements and positions were dripping with racism, actually, at the time, this was the normal state of affairs in the late 1800s and early 1900s in California, Oregon, and Washington, all along the West Coast. This was the yellow peril, jingoistic tenor of the times, and many, many historic signs, statutes, et cetera, in California and San Francisco commemorate the very leaders that were demonizing Asian-Americans and others, and trying to keep them from establishing roots here in California and the United States. That doesn't excuse it. I hear Alex's point, but that's the reality in which we live. You know, in 1854, the California Supreme Court considered reversing the criminal conviction of a guy named Hall, who was convicted of murder, and the victim was Ling Sing, a Chinese miner in Nevada County. And the conviction of Hall was based upon the testimony of someone who was Chinese, a Chinese witness. So the Supreme Court, the California Supreme Court, 17 years before Bolt arrived in California, considered whether a Chinese person, Chinese-American, was eligible to testify against a white man. And this is what the court ruled. Quote, "The same rule would admit them to testify, the same rule that would admit them to testify, would admit them to all the equal rights of citizenship, and we might see them soon in the polls, in the jury box, upon the bench, in even our legislative halls." Well, the Supreme Court now has two Asian-Americans on the bench, Goodwin Liu and Tony Cantil Sakaeue. But the court in 1854 went on to say, quote, "This is not speculation which exists in the excited and overheated imagination of patriot and statesman, but it is an actual and present danger." and present danger. The anomalous spectacle of a distinct people living in our community, recognizing no laws of this state except through necessity, bringing with them their prejudices and national feuds in which they indulge in open violation of the law, whose mendacity is proverbial, a race of people whose nature has marked them as inferior, and who are incapable of progress or intellectual development beyond a certain point as their history has shown, differing in language opinions, color, and physical conformation, between whom and ourselves nature has placed an impassable difference, is now presented and for them is claimed, not only the right to swear away a life of a citizen," meaning Hall, "but the further privilege of participating with us in administering, administering affairs of government," unquote. Well, that was the California Supreme Court that issued that decision, it wasn't a guy like Bolt who, you know, self-educated and ended up making a contribution to the school. So the ironies are not lost on Asian-Americans, certainly not on me who graduated from Bolt, or a person like Karen Korematsu, the daughter of Fred Korematsu, who received the Earl Warren Civil Liberties Award. Now, Warren, although a great Chief Justice of the Supreme Court, was Attorney General in 1942, when the rounding up of Americans, almost 120,000 of them, two-thirds of them American citizens, was, was being done. And he campaigned for governor on the slogan that "The Japs Must Go," you know, basically imprisoning people without trial, without charges, and without due process. The ironies are not lost in someone like Dr. Franklin Odo, who is the, he's a Japanese-American historian, and he currently holds the John J. McCloy, Visiting Professor of American Institutions at Amherst. Well, John J. McCloy was the Undersecretary of War and the chief architect of this mass incarceration of Americans, and one of the key drivers of the whole process. And more than that, he was right in the middle of suppressing the government's own intelligence reports from the FBI, from the Federal Communications Commission, from the Navy, all of which had not only exonerated Japanese-Americans, but also recommended against the mass racial roundup. And we know that because we reopened the Korematsu case on secret war-time documents that, frankly speaking, we accidentally found in the archives that the Justice Department thought would never be found. He's in the middle of that. You know, similarly, anybody who's gone to law school for the last forty years probably learned constitutional law or federal law from one of the casebooks edited by Herbert Wexler. Now, Herbert Wexler, in 1942, 43, and 44, was the Assistant Attorney General. And again, he was right in the middle of the misconduct. The memos we discovered from the Justice Department revealed that there was a battle going on between those Justice Department lawyers, who wanted to reveal that there was really no reason to round up these people, and this is just before the case was heard before the US Supreme Court in 1944, versus John J. McCloy of the War Department, and Herbert Wexler, and the Solicitor General of the United States, Charles Fahey. And at that time, the attorney responsible for supervising the drafting of the government's defense, and supervising the drafting of the brief, Edward Ennis, began to call up all these intelligence reports, basically saying, "Show me what you have, that this was justified and reasonable." And the FBI, J. Edgar Hoover wrote back, quote, "Every complaint has been thoroughly investigated of Japanese, the claim that Japanese-Americans were engaging in espionage, and no information which has been obtained which could substantiate these allegations since the beginning of the war." There were other reports from the Federal Communications Commission and the Navy, as they said, which thoroughly debunked, debunked the Army's claims that this was a justified action. And so, what Burling did is he writes to Herbert Wexler, right, the Assistant Attorney General, and he says, "You will recall the General DeWitt's report," and this is the Army, "makes flat statements concerning radio transmitters and ship-to-shore signaling which are categorically denied by the FBI and the FCC. There's no doubt that these claims are intentional falsehoods," unquote. And he appeals to Attorney General Wexler, the Assistant Attorney General, for support. And he writes a footnote in the Korematsu brief which says, "You know, we have in our possession reports from our own intelligence agencies which contradict the claims that the Army's making that Japanese-Americans are engaged in wrongdoing." And he writes to Wexler and he says, quote, "I assume that the War Department will object to the footnote, and I think we should resist any further tampering with all of our force." Well, the War Department did object, and, and the War Department intervened, and there's another memo to Wexler which, which says, "This department has an ethical obligation to the court to refrain from citing DeWitt's claims if the department knows that these important statements are untrue. The general tenor of DeWitt's report is not only that there was a reason to be apprehensive, but also that overt acts of treason were being committed. Since this is not so, it is highly unfair to this racial minority that these lies go uncorrected. This is the only opportunity which this department has to correct them." Well, all that effort failed, the footnote was deleted and rewritten to basically say, "We have in our possession reports essentially which confirm what the Army is claiming." So, we've got a lot of people in our midst here, I guess that's my point. And again, to bring it to legal education, we're learning from casebooks edited by the person right in the center of lying to the United States Supreme Court. And so, I guess the point I would make is, rather than have these names be erased and disappear, without a trace, without anyone knowing anything about them, I, I'm in favor of rather instead shining a light on them, exposing that in all of its racist glory for people to measure. And I think that is the teachable moment that I think is important. And it's not, it's not an argument of convenience, it's not saying basically, gee, there's so many people that have checkered histories, we can't begin this process, so we're not going to take them on. No, it's actually the reverse. And that is, as we, you know, aspire to be the lawyers we want to be, the judges we want to be, and we want to make, and we do our best to make this country the way it is, that when we encounter these things, we use it as a teachable moment. And I think that would, that would apply here with the name John Bolt. So, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Don Tamaki, class of 1976. And again, thank you to the Opalsa students for the video presentation, to Alex Krem, to Alex Lee, and to Don. So now, we'll begin the portion of the community comments. So once again, if you have something to say, please raise your hand, and then come, I'll pick on someone, and then if you come to the microphone that's closest to you, please introduce yourself, your name, your class year, perhaps where you work, so we know who you are. And we'll try to limit the comments to about two minutes. Okay, so I'll start with you, sir.
Thank you, my name is Peter Munoz, I'm the class of 1975. And I want to say that I sympathize with a lot of the feeling that may be behind the motions here and the efforts, but I cannot agree with it. I mean, I'm a person who suffered prejudice and negative treatment, since I grew up in the, the Central Valley in the 1950s. Is that okay? But I think that when you're, I mean, I was in the Cal PhD History Program before I came to Bolt. And you learn in history that you judge people by their times. You don't try to impose our standards, a modern time, that are enlightened, on people who did not share that, did not have the benefit that we have now. And if you look at the Bolts, both John Bolt and his wife, overall, there are definitely flaws within their character, but overall, they were very progressive people. John was born in 1837, so twenty-three years before the start of the Civil War. He was in Europe getting an education, at the time, at the start of the Civil War. He came back to the United States and volunteered for the Union troops to fight against Mr. Robert E. Lee, who is sometimes put up as a hero. John was fighting against him, all right? Number two, he goes on to Nevada, makes money during the Silver Rush at that point, and a lot of the money, when he came back to the Bay Area, he used for public causes. Now, when he, when he dies, his wife decides that the university, learns that the university needs $100,000 to create a law school. And her decision to support the university here, and the law school here, was something that she believed, that her husband believed in. Now, at the time, the law school at Cal, at Berkeley, was one of the few that did not discriminate on gender, on race, on religion, and on ethnicity. So they decided to give $100,000 to this school. Now, remember, Harvard University did not admit women until 1950, like, forty-seven years later. And Miss Bolt, Mrs. Bolt, wanted really, in her letters and her communications, she wanted to foster women in the law. And a few years after she came and gave her money, the university started, by 1915, Berkeley was the number-two nation, number-two law school in the nation in the number of women who were in their, in the class. The University of Chicago was first, Bolt was second, or Bolt, University of California was second, and we were tied with the, with the University of Washington. I mean, so she's out there, so comments that because Bolt expressed some views, that that made him a racist and a sexist, I mean, the sexist is the opposite of what she was, what these people were. They wanted women here, and they are very much contributing to the current success that Bolt and Berkeley Law has had in getting women into the law. Because that's where it started, it started with the Bolts. Now, number two, as they, as they go forward, we clearly acknowledge the terrible statements that were made by Bolt. But if you remember, and if you look into history, Abraham Lincoln shared exactly the same views about the African-Americans, even after he emancipated the slaves. He said that the African-Americans would never be accepted for more than 100 years because of character traits that they could not change. So unfortunately, he was right, because it was, it took more than 100 years before Martin Luther King came around and really helped us overcome this. But you look at the times, and when you look at Bolt and their views, they were extremely progressive. Now, unfortunately, they were tainted by the, the views that were, that they grew up with. But remember that the immigrant, the Chinese Exclusion Act was passed nationally in 1882. And after that, we have bill, law, and whatever, until the 1950s, 1940s and 50s, when the Chinese, all Asians were really prejudiced against. And I really do feel very much akin with, with the Asians, because of the fact that they're treated the same way that African-Americans were, the Latinos were, that Jews were, and everything, any, anyone that did not match the white power structure. But I think that even, and even if you look at the statements by Bolt, there were some positive things that he said, that you don't hear that much. In the, in the same statement that he is arguing for the exclusion of Chinese, he did say that he admired the laborers, the Chinese laborers, and for their frugality. He considered the Chinese far advanced in many ways to whites, that in the presence of death, he said, "They displayed rare intrepidity, and yielded up their lives with a courage which should be considered heroic in one of our own. And they excel in industry and, and economy." So these are the points that, when you look at a person, you cannot throw away the good that's in them, simply because they have some knowledge and some characteristics that are, that are within their time period. Because all of us are stuck with where we are. And 100 years from now, people will look back at us and criticize us for eating meat, for using too much energy, for not doing the things that gets us into trouble that will be there later. So you have to look at the, at the people, by the time they're in, and in my mind, the Bolts should be awarded, they should be recognized. If they didn't provide the money that would keep, that started this university's law school, I would not be here today. And if you look back at the death of Mrs. Bolt, the pallbearers for her, for her funeral were Benjamin Knight Wheeler, and the dean of the school, and four different law students. That's how much they loved her. So that's all I care, is I totally agree with Don Tamaki's view, that yes, they did something wrong, and we should point that out. But I don't think you'd, you'd totally pull away their name as if they were the equivalent of Robert E. Lee, because they were not. Robert E. Lee, in my mind, and many other people's mind, was wrong, because at the time that he was defending slavery, the vast majority of the population of the United States knew that it was wrong. And he cannot escape by saying that the way he grew up. But in any event, I want to thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. I saw some other hands over there, yes. Can you come to the microphone there and introduce yourself, class year?
Certainly, I'm Michael Fisher, class of 1967, so Alex, I'm four years earlier, and probably a few degrees to the left of you. But I'm also gray-haired old man. And I agree with the statement that Alex made, in part. When I read the piece that John Bolt authored, I wanted to have him have nothing to do with where I went to school. And I still believe in that. I would like, on the lectern where it says Bolt Hall there, not to have that there. I would like on the front of the building where it says Bolt Hall, not to have that But I also think that there are problems, that John Bolt is one of many. And I think what we should do, and from my reading of the policy on naming that applies at this university, that it's not up to the dean, it may be up to the chancellor, it may be up to the president, who gets names and who gets to rename things. But the one issue, as I've read the policy, that is nowhere in there, is what standards do we use? And that's something that we as lawyers do very well. We come up with standards, we come up with policies, we come up with guidelines. And I would like to see my school take that effort through whatever the process is, whether it's to the academic senate, whether it's to the chancellor, but ultimately, to have a policy about how we name, and how we change that when we discover things about those who are named. I also, Alex Lee, you talked about, and, and Don, you both talked about teaching moments. I very much are in favor of that. I don't think we should erase the Bolt name, but just down the hall here, where there's a plaque that talks about who John and Elizabeth Bolt were, in terms that makes me not quite able to recognize at least John Bolt, maybe it's time for a new plaque, saying who they were, and saying what actually wonderful things apparently Elizabeth Bolt did, and explaining the problems with the things that John did. I think we need to use that as our teachable moment. But the one thing I really want to stress is, we need policies. We've heard names here tonight, from Thomas Jefferson, and George Washington, through Earl Warren, through- Earl Warren, through Albert Wexler. We need to know how to deal with all of these. And yes, they were men of their times, they, you know, we have to look at history, but we also need to have policies with how we deal with those issues today. Because when your name is associated high up with a great school like this one, you need to have some honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, right there. Jeffrey.
Oh, hi, everyone. I'm Jeffrey Lindham, class of 2019. Currently, I'm unemployed. I'm a law student. So I think what's, I think a piece of the dialogue that's missing here is, like, what about the new students who are coming in? I think a lot of what's been talking about is sentiments now, but, you know, a lot of, like, the one-else who were speaking in the video, most of them were one-else. And, you know, they came in and they found out about this, and they felt very uncomfortable about learning this space named after John Bolt. And I think it's important to understand that, you know, more students will be coming in, more Asian-American students will be coming. It's important to consider how they will feel about coming to a school that could still be named after him. And, you know, the students now, a lot of the sentiment has been that, you know, we're uncomfortable with it. A pulse has decided to take the stand that we want to rename the school because of how students are feeling now. And it's important to recognize that, you know, as we graduate, as a new generation comes along, we're going to be alumni, and we're going to be ones also donating back to the school. And we don't want, we are the people who don't want this kind of legacy associated with Berkeley Law. And I think that, you know, there's been a lot of talk about, you know, education and really adding context to the name, and that can still be done while removing the name from the school. We can still have something on a website that says, you know, we were once named, the building was once named after John Bolt, and these are the things that he did, and these are the contributions that his wife gave to the school. And erasing the name Bolt doesn't mean we're erasing the history. We're just erasing, you know, his impact on this school and what, you know, making this school a more, a place of learning where people feel comfortable, where the Asian-American students, we're going to feel comfortable learning here. And, you know, I think that law comments are made about history and using like history as a way of like contextualizing things. And, you know, maybe it is something where, you know, we should think about, like, what are we doing now, and how that will be seen in the future? You know, because, you know, people down the line, they might be right. Like, maybe we shouldn't eat meat, maybe we shouldn't be using as much energy as we are using now, because, you know, the people, the future generations are going to be the ones facing the consequences of that.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Sure, right there.
Brad Barber, class of 71. I thought Alex made a number of very powerful points in his presentation, and it's characteristic of him that he would weave together contemporary feelings and figures from the past, and cite in the same speech Edmund Burke and people we would have cited from the 60s. He said there were four reasons to support changing the name of Bolt Hall. And I think it's important to remember that technically, we are talking about changing the name of a building. The issue of marketing, the issue of the name of the law school theoretically was decided as the sign before us says, "This is Berkeley Law," at Bolt Hall. So that there is an important distinction, I think, that has not come up here, and needing criteria for naming and importantly for renaming actions that were taken in the past, as Dean Chimerinsky pointed out, is an issue that's being confronted all over the United States now. The Yale Committee that dealt with the renaming of Calhoun College issued a 26-page report that recommended criteria to the president for naming and for renaming. It's a very thoughtful piece. It's available online. I suggest you look at it. But I also would like to suggest that the criteria identified in that report don't support necessarily, and certainly not without a lot of thought, the renaming of a building that was named in recognition of a gift, in memory, rather than in honor of a person and their actions. And in that regard, the situation of Bolt Hall and the situation of Calhoun College is profoundly different. Calhoun was a man who was known throughout the country for his stand. He was not on slavery and on racism. He may have had some other admirable qualities, and I guess he did, but the college named, the college was named in honor of him by Yale University, not in recognition of a gift. So I want to say that part of my career in law, and in university administration, and in hospital administration, was devoted to securing and investing and then administering private support. And part of the time I did that part of my job, I spent trying to assure donors that if they made gifts in honor or in memory to different things for someone, and the university or the hospital agreed to accept it, that they could rely on that promise. So I think, as the Yale paper pointed out, renaming's, there should be a strong presumption against renaming's, both for practical reasons, but also for reasons of what is, what is right and wrong. A deal is a deal. If the university goes back on its promise now to Mrs. Bolt, how do we, how do we assure future donors that if something unfortunate comes up 40 years or 100 years later, that that deal will now, in light of new thinking, be thought to be all right to be removed? So I also want to say, and I want to make it very clear, I do kind of agree with all four points that Alex made. Judge Bolt's remarks that a speech in 1877 were more than deplorable, they were viable, vile, they can't be countenanced, and they are hurtful, I'm sure, even today. But as Don Tamaki pointed out, regrettably, they weren't unique to him at that time. We don't know what he felt after he gave that one speech, and I suppose his involvement in the 1882 Immigration Act. But others shared similar views. If we determine that President Wheeler felt that way, or President Barrows, or John McLaughlin, or Mr. Hearst, all of whom have buildings named for them, and knowing a little about them, I can imagine that they might have had similar views. So where does that stop? We know that Bishop Barclay, Bishop of Klein, owned slaves on his plantation, which he gave to Yale. And that made Yale an owner of slaves as well. We don't know for sure what Klein felt about the eternal soul of slaves. He's quoted actually as saying contradictory things. Is one right, is the other wrong? We don't know. And we don't know much about Judge Bolt, apart from a very sketchy biography and one deplorable speech he made. But that isn't why the hall that his wife's money helped build, that's not why the regents agreed to name it. They agreed to do so because the widow asked for them to name it in his memory. It's different than naming it in his honor.
So, Mr. Barber?
So, I will.
We have about 30 seconds left, because I want to give the opportunity to speak to other individuals.
I have some other points I'd like to make. I'll submit them in writing.
Thank you.
I do want to thank you and thank the other people on the panel for the appropriate tone of this debate. It's, it is a sensitive one, it's one that causes, I'm sure, great pain, and you're doing the right thing in approaching it in this manner. But think carefully before you apply contemporary views to what was done in the past. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name's Tony Platt, class of 66 in the School of Criminology on this campus. Got my doctorate in 1966. Came back and taught in the School of Criminology and the Center for the Study of Law and Society in the late 60s and 70s, until the School of Criminology that raised a lot of the issues that we're hearing discussed here today was disappeared and mostly forgotten in the mid 1970s due to the intervention of Governor Reagan, Edwin Meese, and others, who didn't like to have a criminology program on campus that was critical of the, of state institutions, of the prison system, police brutality, and so on. I'm fortunate to be, to have taught here then, and then to be back here now the last two or three years at the Center for the Study of Law and Society. I've also worked on two campaigns of name-changing. I worked on a campaign in Sacramento where people do on research that I'd done on the history of eugenics, to get rid of the name of a school named after Charles M. Gady, who was a ultra-right-wing Nazi-loving eugenicist who'd given a lot of money to different projects in Sacramento and California, was honored all over the country. And the people in the school launched a campaign and successfully got his name off the school, a middle school. And recently, I worked on supporting a campaign in Stanford to get Termon's name, the psychologist who developed the racialized IQ tests, to get his name off schools in Stanford, and they're going through the process of now trying to figure out how to rename those schools. So the slippery slope, I welcome the slippery slope, I would say. I think the slippery slope is a great idea, because in the past, names were imposed on places. And yes, if we start removing Bolt's name and other names, we begin to look at other names, but that would bring about, I think, the democratization of public space and public history, which is what we need. And I think a name on a building like Bolt is an aspirational name. It's not just about the past, it's not just about people that gave money. It's about an aspiration, and I certainly don't want to be associated with an institution that has the name of a racist as its aspiration today. I think we should have a full and lengthy debate about what the name of the building should be, and I think that should be part of what one of you called the teachable moment. The worry I have about the teachable moment, though, is that if you look in this room here, this has been a fascinating discussion, really helpful, complicated, nuanced discussion about these issues, but we have, what, 85 or 100 people in the room? And teachable moments go on in the classroom. The question is how to take teachable moments and make them a part of everyday life, and make them a part of the history and the public matters of the state. And I think the university needs to be concerned about the slippery slope and the teachable moment, because it's not just about John Bolt. A few yards from here, there are 10,000 remains of human beings, native people, that are kept on this campus, that came out of the anthropology department, that encouraged people to dig up native grave sites and send the remains to this campus so the anthropologists could research them and look at them and try to come up with racist understandings of why certain groups disappeared, not looking at the history of genocide. Go downstairs to the first floor and look at the pictures of the early 20th century graduates of Berkeley Law School, and you'll see a remarkable lack of diversity. And an occasional woman that's always in the front row of those photographs, they're down there on the first floor where you can go and look at them. So I think the slippery slope opens up for institutions like a famous university like this one, a lot about its past. And while I agree that I worry about getting rid of the name, and then we all forget about it, like the people in Sacramento have mostly forgotten why they got rid of the eugenicist's name on the school there, I also think that we need to think about ways of institutionalizing that historical memory. And so if we set up, for example, annual rituals, ceremonies, talked about the issue of reparations, which nobody's raised today, but reparations, we're talking about John Bolt's ideas that caused damage and sorrow to tens of thousands of human beings. Eugenics programs that were supported by universities like Berkeley that supported incredible damage to millions of people. So the question for me is not just having a teachable moment now and in the classroom, which we always want to use, but how to set up an institutional memory, a regular ceremony, a regular set of rituals, a regular way of marking what's happened in the past so that it doesn't disappear. And I'll leave you one example from an interesting way of remembering things in New York. The Triangle Fire, Shertways Fire, that destroyed, killed hundreds of women, mostly immigrant women who were working in a factory in New York when a fire burst out, they were locked in working there. And in the past, people have now begun to remember that event and try to commemorate it and so on. And there's an artist who every year finds out where the women who were killed in that building, where they, where they lived, and they, she goes with a group of other people who want to commemorate that event, and they go to the house that the people, the people lived in, and they chalk the name of the person and who she was and her age that she died. They chalk it on the sidewalk outside of the house that the person lived in. And when she was asked about this, like, what's the point of chalking something here? It's going to, the rain's going to come and it's going to be gone. She said, exactly, because next year then we'll have to come back and do it again to recreate that memory. So that's what I think we also need to be talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Kwan.
I'm Michael Kwan. I'm a class of 1998, and until a few weeks ago, Quinn was my colleague. I'm at Kecervan, S.M. Peterson, the city. And I just wanted to say that since learning about John Bolt and his history, not his whole history, but, but the reason why we're all here, last December, when I was making my contributions to various causes, I always support the school, and the way I support the school is by donating to what is termed the Bolt Hall Fund. And it actually made me pause, and it made me pause for quite a bit, but I was glad that this process is going on, so I figured that I could make a contribution to the Bolt Hall Fund, notwithstanding its name. But it did cause me a lot of, a lot of concern, and I think it's a concern that I'll have more and more with each coming year, that it remains the Bolt Hall Fund. And I'm sure there'll be other people who have that same feeling. So I wanted to offer that perspective. And I also just want to say that even if the Bolt Hall name is removed and we go on to some other name, and you feel that, on balance, or viewed in context, or however you want to put it, that John Bolt was, on balance, a good man, that's a pretty good run. That's over a century. And no matter what we do, the school will have had that name or been associated with that name for over a century. And, you know, there's, there's statute of limitations, the rule against perpetuities, whatever you want to call it. I think that it's, it's okay. It's okay for us to move on and do something different now. And whether you view that as just a change in context and time, or as correcting an error that shouldn't have been made in the first place, either way, maybe you won't all agree, maybe I won't agree with you, but again, I think 100 years is good enough.
Thank you, Michael Kwan.
Thank you very much. Jonathan Simon, class of 87, JSP, class of, I think-
JSP, class of, I think, '90. Can't quite remember. PhDs are fishy. And I now teach here at the law school. I want to thank everyone who's spoken. I've just been, I'll always be proud to have gone to this law school, whatever its name is, because of the incredible intelligence and compassion of its graduates. I think, on balance, I believe we should rename it, mainly because I think the name should be aspirational, more than memorial. I mean, maybe universities should accept money from people who just want to memorialize their loved ones. But I think they shouldn't do it unless there's also a reason to hold that person up, to aspire for our students in the future. But I'm moved by much of what I've heard here. I think some effort ought to be made to honor Elizabeth Bolt, maybe with scholarships that call out her role in bringing women into the law or supporting diversity at Berkeley Law. I do want to also pick up on, you know, the criteria we should use. I think one of them is sort of whether the evil the person is associated with is sort of truly past or not. And the figures associated with slavery, it seems to me slavery, we can say, although there are pockets of our labor system that look frighteningly like it, is in our past. Eugenics, I'm afraid, is not. It never has been fully buried the way slavery was and it deserves to be. And given the fact that, you know, we're told by our current president that we want immigrants from Norway and not Africa, I think it's obvious that thinking along racial planning lines is still an important part of America's political imagination. And I think we ought to be in the forefront of calling it out. And changing the name Bolt would be an important way to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simon, class of '87.
Hi, my name is Bonifasha Cisson. I'm a 1L here. My statement is pretty short. So I'm hearing the argument a lot here that history will judge us. People in the future always judge people in the past. And fair or not fair, that's just what people do. And I guess my concern here tonight is that we will be judged in history in the future. People in the future will see that we had this opportunity in front of us. We debated, we discussed whether or not to change John Bolt Hall's name. And I'm concerned that we're not going to do it. And then history will judge us for failing to act. And I think that we're living in an increasingly diverse and tolerant society. And their views will become even more tolerant and diverse and that they're definitely going to be judging us if we fail to act tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. So, right there. And then I'll get to you next.
Hi, my name is David Oppenheimer. I teach here. And I was a visiting student here for a year, 1977, '78. And ever since, I've had great, great affection for what I've always thought of as Bolt Hall. And it saddens me that I think we have to change the name. And at the same time, it also makes me feel so good about the place that we're going about this process in the way that we are. I thank the dean and the committee and everyone who's participating with the civility that I think is an illustration of what we try to teach and learn from each other as lawyers who had the benefit of a Berkeley law education. A lot of really good points have been made tonight. But I think the one that stands out the most for me was what I heard from the students about their reaction to learning that they're at a school that was named in memory of someone who would not want them to be here, to be here in this country, to be here at this school. And I think that's just, it's essential for us in building the kind of diverse community that we are building here that we not permit that ongoing insult. Now, I don't think the Bolt name should be completely erased. It's an important part of our history. And what I'd like to see is an annual symposium on racism, named after Bolt Hall, or named after John Bolt, rather, and giving recognition to the complexity of this person, the complexity of his time, the complexity of our own time, and a symposium in which we really all try to learn more about the social illness of racism and what it has meant and continues to mean in our society. So I hope we will remember John Bolt in that way. Thank you.
Thank you, David Oppenheimer.
Hi, I'm Mike Halloran. This is just an excellent discussion, everything I could have hoped for from my law school, Bolt Hall, from which I graduated in 1965. My name is Mike Halloran. Bolt Hall has allowed me to do a lot of things, including becoming general counsel of Bank of America, including becoming second-in-command of the Securities and Exchange Commission at the time of the financial crisis, thank you, for which we were summarily voted out of office, you know. And in high positions in the ABA and 20 other things I've done for many years, all of which I attribute to this law school, of which I am very proud. I was shocked to learn of the press and the articles on John Bolt. I didn't know about that history. And I read his writings or speeches, and I was shocked. There is no question that those writings and speeches are racist. And they are repugnant to what we stand for. I would like to say, however, that when I was in law school, out of a class of, I think, 205, we had a grand total of seven women. Today, I understand, it's like 2/3, Dean. I think you told me. Fantastic, you know. But a harkening back to that class of seven women, all of whom, they were tough. They became great, whether your name was Rose Byrd, who was on the California Supreme Court, or your name was Sharon Stanton White, who became head of the National Bond Lawyers Association. She was the best municipal bond lawyer, started her own firm in the state of California, and others. We sat in class together. And I believe that they thought, I know that they thought, because they didn't have an internet to go research, I guess, that it was the Elizabeth Jocelyn Bolt Hall. That's what they thought. I don't think they really thought much about John Bolt. They thought it was Elizabeth Jocelyn Bolt Hall because that was kind of the word. And secondly, they were proud of the fact that a law school was named after a woman like them. In fact, it may have been the only law school in the nation named after a woman. And I'm here to say today that I think it would be a shame to remove the name of Elizabeth Jocelyn Bolt from the name of this law school. And therefore, I do propose to you students who have raised tremendously valid points with which I have complete sympathy, that we do rename the school. And we rename it the Elizabeth Jocelyn Bolt School in the way that we should to encourage even more women and others to come to this school and in that memory. Now, somebody's raised that there was John Calhoun at Yale. I guess the college was named after him. And there was Robert E. Lee at Duke, I guess it was, a statue in front of Duke. And maybe you'll view this as inconsistent, but I do approve of the removal of those names in those situations. The reason is, I mean, maybe this is very basic. We won and they lost. That's another reason is that produced the death of millions of Americans in this country, those positions, by those people, in the same way that Hitler and the Nazis produced the death of millions of people. I do not approve of statues honoring Nazis. I do not approve of statues honoring people who engaged in that. Okay? I don't think that Bolt caused those millions of deaths. What he did was despicable. But in particular, since Elizabeth Jocelyn Bolt made the donation after he died, spent her life over here at the school, revered in the University of California, I think we should preserve her name. And that's the change in the name we should make. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike Halloran, class of '65. Over there.
Hello, everyone. My name is Julia Lepis, and I'm a 1L at Berkeley. I think you guys saw the video earlier, and I was in that. And I discuss my experience. I am mixed race. I'm half Asian and half Latina. So I'm not someone John Bolt expected to ever be at this school. I definitely have personal reasons as to why I think the school should rename itself. And those kind of go to my childhood, my upbringing. Being mixed race, you are not accepted in a lot of spaces. I look Asian. I go to Hispanic spaces, and I'm very much not accepted. Even in Asian spaces, my experience is that I've been treated differently. And Berkeley was the first place where I had met other people with the same experience as me. I met other people who are mixed race, who had similar backgrounds or at least identified with multiple identities. And then I find out that the school is named after someone who doesn't believe in that. And to me, that's very hurtful. And I'd say that's my personal reason for renaming it. And my other reason comes down to what we learn in the law. One of the first things I learned in school was to be critical of everything we are told, from every statute to every judicial decision. And when we have tests that weigh factors, we have to weigh what's important and what's not important. From the history that I have been presented, I only see that these writings and these speeches are the only prominent things that I have seen. In some cases, I see how they weigh other factors in deciding whether to keep names. But I just do not see those present here. And for those reasons, I do think we should rename the school.
Thank you. There was a hand there, yes.
Carl Stoney, class of '70. Hi, Alex. Alex and I were good friends in law school, and we've remained, excuse me, close over the years. And so, Alex, I want to say that I thought your presentation was absolutely excellent. I just strongly disagree for reasons that have been stated here by others, such as my former law partner, Peter Munoz. I say former because I'm retired now and he isn't, Brad Barber. And I'm going to come right back to Mike Halloran's statement in a minute because he ended up, he ends up exactly where I end up. But I want to make just a couple of points first, which is, you know, when I read, I read the 1877 speech that John Bolt gave fairly carefully twice. And I think the portrayal of him as a pure racist is too strong. It turned out his belief that assimilation would not happen turns out to be wrong, okay? But I don't think the tone of that. I thought it wasn't completely racist. It was somewhat, it wasn't racist at all, is what I'm going to say. I thought it was fairly thoughtful. And so I take issue with that. And I would note also that when you, my biggest problem, frankly, is going back and revising history. This was 1877. And so, for example, the term Chinaman was the term at the time. So, in any event, I encourage everybody that has not, anybody that has not read that to read it because it is fairly thoughtful. The second point I want to make along these lines is that Charles Reichman, I guess it's pronounced when he wrote the piece in The Chronicle, he said that, he was talking at one point, this, I'm reading now from that article. He, and Bolt invoked alleged criminality, intellectual differences, cruelty, inhumanity of the Chinese, and mused, here's the point, and mused it would be better to exterminate a strongly dissimilar race than assimilate it. And that was in the context of talking about the centuries-old struggle between the Saxons and the Normans. And so I would submit that this is a somewhat opportunistic, misleading statement that Reichman, Reichman to pull that out of his essay, I think, is misleading. Now, one point before coming back to Mike Halloran's point is that, again, this gets back to, I wouldn't change anything, frankly, for the reasons I've alluded to now. But at the time, and this gets back to what Don Tomachi was saying. In early 1942, I believe, the actual action taken to inter the Japanese-Americans was by presidential order. But Congress did, in fact, take that up, probably as a vote of confidence. I'm not quite sure, but I do know what the vote was. Early 1942, the House of Representatives was unanimous on the internment of the Japanese-Americans. And the Senate was 98 to 1. You're probably wondering who the 1 was. And I will tell you, it's a little bit counterintuitive to start, but it happened to be Robert Taft of Ohio. But the point at the time, I'm going to submit that 530 or thereabouts, however many voted in the House, plus the Senate, there's some pretty darn good people in there that, at the time, made that vote. Now, I'm coming back to Mike Halloran's point. I gave this a lot of thought. And my conclusion is, I'll call it a compromise. I gave this a lot of thought, and my conclusion is, I'll call it a compromise, and I don't only think it's a compromise, I think it's the right answer, is to rename it the Elizabeth Jocelyn Bolt Hall. And that might have the double advantage of retaining a teaching moment, but at the same time, honoring her. She did make the gift, her husband had died four or five years earlier. The school's website, on the name, what's the title of it here, the, well, the name of the school, the history of, the school name, and it talks about how she was, in fact, the matriarch of the law school for the last 10 years of her life. And as I think has been mentioned earlier, I mean, Benjamin I. Wheeler, president, was a pallbearer, a regent gave the eulogy, and I think that's the, again, I'll call it a compromise, if you will, I think that it's a renaming, but that's what the renaming should be. And I also would underline what my friend Brad Barber here said about, you know, a deal's a deal. She made the gift, she did it for that purpose. Her name's Bolt. That's my conclusion.
Thank you, Carl, class of 1970. So we have about seven minutes left, so probably time for a few more comments. Yes, right there.
One, I just very much appreciate the town hall meeting. My name's Cecilia Leary. I did not graduate from Berkeley Law. I got my PhD from the history department, and as a historian, I'd like to speak to a couple of different issues. One, people are not just of their times. There were slave owners, and there were abolitionists. People make decisions. And I think that, so I think that kind of justification doesn't work. So I think today, we have to decide, who are we going to be? And I think we should stand against racism, both in our past and today. So that's number one. And then number two, in terms of thinking about teachable moments, over the last several years, I've been an advisor to the director of the new National Museum of African-American History, the Smithsonian that just opened. And in the history hall, of course, there's Thomas Jefferson. And this country, as we know, is founded on slavery and freedom. So what do we do with Thomas Jefferson? Well, the way it's handled is we have the bronze figure of Thomas Jefferson, but it's the paradox of freedom which is over him. And behind him are the building bricks with the slaves' names. So it's not Thomas Jefferson who built this country. Who built this country? And what's the paradox? And at what time, and at what moments, do we stand up and say, yes, we are going to make changes? And it seems to me, this is one of them. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Cecilia Leary.
Hi, I'm Tara Rackham, I'm a 1L here at Berkeley, class of 2020. You know, I was a finance undergrad, and I worked in finance for the last few years. I never thought that I would be so invested in an issue like this. I thought I'd be at a forum, talking about how Bitcoin is the next big bubble waiting to burst. But I'm here now, and I think it's because what happened in law schools, I came down to this fundamental question that comes up in a lot of classes, of, there was this switch in legal thinking, that where we thought of what the law was and what the law should be, this originalist versus realist argument. And for me, this was a big switch this semester, because I started thinking about the power we have as lawyers in this legal field to change what we already know, to kind of go beyond what we see society as today and where we're going to go tomorrow. So when I thought about Bolt and the building Bolt Hall, it's all fair and done. We don't know the, we know the original intent was in memory of Bolt, John Bolt. His memory today, whether or not we can choose to ignore it, is about this paper. This is all I know about John Bolt. I don't know anything else about him. Most of us don't. So whether or not there's a teachable moment, we should definitely educate people on everything that they did. But the realist in me tells me that this law school is something that's future-facing. A lot of what it is, is that it exists both in the past and the future simultaneously. And I think that our names should reflect that, whether it's Elizabeth Bolt's name or anyone else's name, that name should be future-facing to the future generations of lawyers that we aspire to educate and create. And I'd like to end with the fact that, whether or not you call it Bolt or Berkeley, I'm very proud to go to this school and be in the same community as you. Whether or not we agree in politics, whether or not we agree in our thoughts, I'm very honored in the way that we handled this today, because I completely came here expecting a lot of personal attacks, and I was really glad to hear a lot of educational and academic arguments. So thank you.
So being, trying to be timely, if there are more comments, please, is there one last, oh, yes, please, one last comment, and then Dean Chimerinsky will close us out.
I just wanted to make a quick comment. My name is Angela, I'm a faculty member here. And I just wanted, I wanted to thank the students for your tape. It was very powerful and moving, and it reminded me that one of the central purposes of our work here is to educate students and to prepare them to be lawyers. And it reminded me of how difficult it is to learn in a hostile environment. And I had, your clip made me think about what it must feel like every day to walk into a building, right, that has a name that basically tells you that you don't belong, and what that might do to your ability to concentrate in the classroom and to learn and to feel like this is your school. And I wanted just to remind everyone to keep that in mind, that we're here to educate students, and we have to think about the environment that they're learning in, and what it feels like to walk into the door every day of a building that tells them that they don't belong here.
Thank you. So with that, that'll be the last comment. We deeply appreciate everyone being here. If there are further comments, there's still time to submit it to the committee, to the dean, to many of us here. And with that, I will turn it over to Dean Chimerinsky.
I just want very much to thank everyone for their articulate, their candid, their powerful comments. In terms of the process at this point, the committee will continue to receive input. I've asked the committee to make recommendations. Those recommendations will be a public document. They will then be vetted with all of the different constituency groups, faculty, staff, students, alums, as decisions are made. I hope that you'll join me and take a moment, especially to thank those on the panel, Quinn, for moderating, Don, Alex, and Alex, for their wonderful comments and preparation. Also to thank all who came to the microphones and spoke tonight, and for their, as I say, articulate, candid, powerful comments. The discussion tonight shows that this is enormously difficult issue, but it couldn't have been a better discussion. Thank you all so much.